I call to order the Gurnee Village Board regular meeting of November 3rd, 2025. Roll call, please.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Woodside.
Present.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
O'Brien.
Present.
Thomas. Bye, present.
You'll stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Kind of an unusual night tonight. We're still going to do some village business, keep it relatively short, and then we're going to move right on to the recognition of Sergeant Allen Lynch, who's present here tonight, and have a number of things we'd like to do for a celebration for him. So, to begin with, we have public comment. We're going to do it a little bit differently this, tonight. There won't be a public comment following the meeting, so if there's anybody that would like to make a public comment, either with regard to the items on the agenda or off, you could step up to the microphone and state your name. All right, so there being none, we'll just move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee O'Brien, second by Trustee Garner. Roll call, please.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. Pat?
Item number one, approval of the minutes on the January 20th, 2025 meeting. Item number two, approval of the 2026 Village Board meeting schedule. Item number three, approval payroll for period ending October 17th, 2025, in amount of $1,145,958.14. Item number four, approval bills for period ending November 3rd, 2025, in amount of $1,
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Garner, second by Trustee Ross. Roll call, please.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. On to new business. Item number one, approval of ordinance 2025.
Seventy-six.
Amending Chapter 78, Section 78-105, subsection D of the Gurnee Municipal Code to remove the parking prohibition on Hickory Haven Drive, both sides. Pat?
Sure. So I had a memo from our community development director, David Ziegler. A couple of months back, we were approached by residents on Hickory Haven Drive regarding the no parking on either side of the street. Based on those longtime residents that have lived there, the no parking restriction went into effect probably about 20 years ago, an attempt to alleviate parking demands from those that visited Lake Karina. Since that time, 2008, they constructed some parking at Lake Karina, so parking up in Hickory Haven by non-residents on the street hasn't been an issue. As a result, they requested that we remove that restriction. I directed them to start a petition, have their neighbors sign it, so we could see that there was support from the neighborhood to lift that. They did that. Of the 28 or 29 homes in there, 20 of them signed on in support of removing the no parking restriction. So David went ahead, developed this amendment to municipal code to remove that. The no parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM will remain in place, just like any other village street, as well as the no parking during snow and ice operations. So it is ready for your consideration.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee O'Brien, second by Trustee Thorstensen. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. Item two, approval of ordinance 2025.
Seventy-seven.
Authorizing an extension of time for a special use permit to allow for the establishment and operation of a government office on property located at 5626-5652, North Woods Drive, previously granted under ordinance number 202381. Pat?
Sure. So back in November 2023, the Village Board approved a special use permit to allow the Veterans Assistance Commission of Lake County to establish and operate a government office on the property formerly occupied by Outback Steakhouse and Joe's Crab Shack. Just a reminder, the building will include one- and three-story sections and offer programming services to veterans and their families, including, it'll have a gym and fitness area, individual and group training, cafe, kitchen, community hub, office spaces. The special use permit becomes effective with the building permit. Since they're currently in the fundraising stage, the building permit hasn't been applied for yet, so they've requested this extension. They expect to break ground in the spring of 2028. So we developed this extension to extend the special use permit to the end of March of 2028. So by that time, building permits should be applied for, which would trigger or activate the special use permit. So that is what is before you for consideration this evening, extending that till March of 2028.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Woodside, second by Trustee Garner. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Thorstensen.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
All right, on to, there's two final proclamations for our business portion of the meeting. Appropriately, it's a proclamation designating November 11th, 2025, as Veterans Day in the Village of Gurnee. On Veterans Day, we express profound gratitude to our courageous men and women who have served in the armed forces, recognizing their dedication, sacrifice, and patriotism. We pledge our duty to ensure they receive the respect, support, and care they deserve. Their valor, valor, valor and commitment have left an indelible mark on our nation's history and continue to inspire us to build a more just, inclusive, and secure society. We also honor the vital contribution of veterans' families and acknowledge our shared national responsibility to provide veterans with the healthcare benefits and assistance needed for a successful transition to civilian life, education, and overall well-being. We remain committed to upholding the principles of equality, justice, and freedom for which our veterans have fought while celebrating the enduring legacy of courage, honor, and commitment they have bestowed upon us. Now therefore, I, Thomas Hood, Mayor of Gurnee, do hereby proclaim November 11th as Veterans Day in the Village of Gurnee and encourage all to pay tribute to veterans living and departed for their dedication to our country and their service in the armed forces. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee O'Brien, second by Trustee Ross. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. On to the proclamation for why we're all here tonight. And this proclamation is with reference to designate November 3rd, 2025, as Allen J. Lynch Day in the Village of Gurnee. And the Village of Gurnee recognizes and honors the extraordinary service and heroism of Allen J. Lynch, James Lynch, Medal of Honor recipient and a longtime resident of Gurnee. On December 15, 1967, while serving as a radio telephone operator with the U.S. Army's 12th Cavalry, 1st Cavalry Division, Air Mobile in Vietnam, then Specialist 4th Class Lynch repeatedly risked his life under heavy enemy fire to rescue and protect wounded comrades. His actions enabled the safe evacuation of fellow soldiers and served as an inspiration to all who witnessed his courage. For his gallantry and dedication, Allen Lynch was awarded the Medal of Honor by President Richard M. Nixon on May 14, 1970. Following his distinguished military service, Mr. Lynch continued his commitment to serve as a passionate veterans advocate, supporting fellow veterans through his work with the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs and the founding of the Allen J. Lynch Foundation. Now therefore, I, Thomas Hood, Mayor of Gurnee, do hereby proclaim November 3rd as Allen J. Lynch Day in the Village of Gurnee and encourage all residents to join in honoring his extraordinary courage, sacrifice, and commitment to the nation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Garner, second by Trustee Thorstensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Garner, second by Trustee O'Brien. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So our business portion of the meeting is adjourned, so we're going to move on to the portion of, as it's entitled on my piece of paper, Allen J. Lynch Day Agenda. How about that? So what I'd like to do is I'll just start, just give just a general summary, and then the board, actually at this point, maybe we'll do it right now, is that if we'll just all go out in the audience. So I'd be remiss for not acknowledging our clerk, Andy Harris, because tonight wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for him. Andy has all the stats and facts about how awesome when a recipient is in our midst. I think if you don't know the numbers, and Andy told them before I came in, and I'm not going to recite them, but it's very, very, very unusual that someone receives the Congressional Medal of Honor. It's, I think that the numbers I've seen, that just over 3,000 people in the entire history of our country has received it, and we have a person in our midst that's received it. And in our country today, there's only 62 people that are currently alive that have received it. So it's not something that's given out lightly, and rightfully so, and Sergeant Allen Lynch was very deserving of receiving that. We're going to have a video in a little bit to go through that, but I would just say that for me, as awesome as it was for what he did in the line of duty, the life he led after that speaks louder to me, because he has impacted many, many people's lives that are veterans today, to allow them to be able to live lives that they deserve to live, that to be able to provide services to them that they wouldn't have received otherwise. And he more than paid back, after he served in Vietnam, that when he came to the U.S. and working with veterans, that he made a difference. It wasn't just lip service. And to me, when we recognize veterans on November 11th, I always think it's important to honor them, but it's really, we need to do something. We need to provide opportunities to them, we need to recognize the problems they've got from being in, being in service, and Sergeant Lynch is no stranger to the difficulties that you receive when you're in active combat. So he understands how that works, and that's something that I really wanted to recognize here, and the village has been kind enough, and the board has been kind enough, to make sure this all happens tonight. So hopefully, we're able to do it a little bit of justice, to be able to recognize Sergeant Lynch, and to be able to just say that veterans are important to us, that I stand here today, and I know I don't even come close to recognizing the freedom that I walk in is purchased by people's blood that have gone before me. Many, many men and women have gone before me and have done that, and have made a choice to sacrifice their life so that I can stand here and wax eloquent to what they've done. But at the end of the day, they've made a choice, and they paid for their lives, and then their family has paid for what they paid for. So I am eternally grateful and recognizing, and we have a person here tonight, and for all the other veterans, actually, for all those that have served in the armed forces, would you like to stand that are present here too as well? So you hear those words, "Thank you for your service." It's "thank you," and I just appreciate it, and we hope that as a village, that we'd be able to go beyond the "thank you," that we'd be able to provide assistance and services and recognition that come close, or attempt to come close to what you've done. So what I'd like to do next is that this video provides a really great summary of some of the things that Sergeant Lynch has been involved with. So, Matt?
I was born in Roseland, Illinois, which is now a suburb of Chicago. I was pretty much raised in Indiana. That's where I attended grade school and junior high. I had been bullied in grade school and in high school quite a lot. I was, I'm not the hero, you know, that you see in the books. I was pushed around a lot when I was in grade school, high school, had a bad self-image, and I wanted to test myself. I had come to that point in my growth that I needed to do something to figure out who I was. So I volunteered for Vietnam.
Allen Lynch enlisted in the Army in 1964. Two years later, he volunteered to go to Vietnam. By December of 1967, Lynch was serving as radio telephone operator with the 12th Cavalry in Bin Din Province.
We had been in the field for quite a long time, had been chasing the North Vietnamese in the end of the B.C. quite a lot during November, December, and a lot of firefights, a lot of contact. So they pulled us out to stand down, which was, that's where you get your showers, and you get your weapons fixed, and all of that kind of thing. And so we had, a bunch of us had gone to town and got back to base and walked into a briefing. It seems that A Company was sucked into an ambush and was screaming for help and so on, and we were to air assault in the next day, zero dark thirty, and relieve them. And so we air assaulted into some village, and we were getting ready to move around the perimeter to go in and hit A Company, or hit where A Company was from the flank. And it seems that A Company was the bait. The Vietnamese were dug in. They were in spider holes, they were in hooches, they were in trees, they were everywhere. And what they did is they let us, they let us move in, and we walked into an ambush. One of our appointment came, tried to get back. The other, his partner was shot in both legs, in the shins. And so he came back and got shot halfway out. I think he got shot in the shoulder. So I went out and got him and brought him back to our lines, and he told me that his partner was laying out there and couldn't move because his legs were gone, they were shattered pretty good. So I dropped my radio, which I shouldn't have done. I asked my LT if I could go get him. I thought I'd just run out, pick him up, and bring him home. And as it happened, I went out there and got him, and we both got pinned down. And then Cusarus started to come over, I think, to help out, and about halfway over, he got shot. So I went out and I got him, and there was such intense fire that I, there was only one place to go, was back to where we were.
Unable to return to friendly lines, Lynch remained on the battlefield to aid his wounded comrades. He secured a nearby trench by killing two enemy soldiers at point-blank range. With the trench cleared, he returned through heavy enemy fire to carry the wounded men to safety.
We stayed for a long time. They called in artillery and jet strikes on us. Jets came so close over so we could count the rivets on there, on the fuselage. They actually came over, when they came over, they dropped napalm right on top. They actually, we watched the napalm being let go, and it spun. Had I been in school, I would have known that speed, distance, and all of that, we were not going to get hurt, but at that time, it was pretty scary.
Alone, Lynch defended his isolated position for two hours against the advancing enemy until he was able to carry the wounded across an exposed area to a more secure position. He then located a counterattacking friendly force to assist in directing the attack and evacuating the wounded.
I got back to my unit. They pulled us all out. When we were finally rescued, they pulled us all out of the field. You know, the wounded guys went into one tent and got their wounds taken care of, and I got into another tent, got a little white pill, and then I had several liquid refreshments for a couple of days, and then I ended up back with my unit, was standing down on another LZ, and I came back and they told me they had put me in for the Medal of Honor. Then it got lost. Never heard anything about it before, you know, and the day before I got married, I was notified I was going to get the Medal of Honor. I had a police, I have a problem with my foot when I drive. It seems to press down on the gas too much. So I was coming home, and I was followed by a police officer for like the last couple of miles. I turned, he turned, oh, cramming, I'm going to, you know, get a ticket. And he pull into my driveway, and he pulls in right behind me, and I get out, geez, officer, I'm sorry, what did I do? He says, is your name Allen Lynch? I said, yes. He says, is your social security number this? I said, yes. He says, call this number. And I'm like, what did I do? And he says, it's a good thing, just, I'll see you, goodbye, have a nice day, call that number. So I went into the house, I called the number, and I got some Colonel. He goes, Allen Lynch, the same thing. Says, why, I have the great honor to tell you that you're going to be getting, receiving the Congressional Medal of Honor from President Nixon on, I think it was Armed Forces Day, 1970. There were 12 of us that received the medal that day by President Nixon. I was so blown away when they put that medal around my neck, and I never realized the impact that it would have on my life. This is a representation of the very best that America has to offer. We are, we are given the tremendous honor and privilege of representing the thousands upon thousands of men and women who have served our country, who did wonderful, marvelous, heroic things and never got recognized, and we carry this for them. It's not me, it's not what I did, it's what they did, and that wasn't recognized, and I think that's, it's a tremendous responsibility, it's a tremendous honor to do this.
This is the quickest way to clear out stuck poo.
So at this time, I'd like to invite down the post commander of the American Legion, Jim Walsh, to speak.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jim Walsh, commander of Gurnee American Legion Post 771, and I am truly humbled to be asked to talk about the meeting of the Medal of Honor. According to congressional law, the medal is authorized for gallantry and intrepidity at the risk of one's life above and beyond the call of duty. While engaged in action against an enemy of the United States, or while engaged in military operations involving conflict with an opposing foreign force, or while serving with friendly foreign forces engaged in an armed conflict against opposing armed forces, which the United States is not a belligerent party. Out of 41 million service members since the creation of the Navy Medal of Honor in 1861, only 3,587 have received the medal. Clearly, more than that many members have gone above the call of duty in risking their lives with gallantry and intrepidity over the last 165 years of conflict the United States has been involved in. So the medal must mean more than that. It is the highest military honor, period. It is the way each service says to its service members, from the lowliest marine soldier, sailor, airman, or guardian, to its highest general or admiral. Here, here is what it means to be brave. Here is what it means to sacrifice. Here is what it means to serve. It is the way each service tells the citizens it serves. Here are our heroes. As witnessed by the 61 current living Medal of Honor recipients and all the recipients who went out before them, the Medal of Honor is indeed about far more than valor. As a group and as individuals, they believe they did no more than the people whom they served with. The Medal of Honor is about humility. Some continued careers in the military, others immediately separated. After finishing with the military, some became captains of industry, others just took humble careers. Regardless, they found ways to care for their families, their neighbors, their fellow veterans. The medal means to serve. So the Medal of Honor is used to recognize the people the services feel embody the attributes of courage, humility, and service. Is that all the services have done? No. Along with the medal come many opportunities. These opportunities include access to many places on base not accessible to other veterans and civilians, free flights on military aircraft that have space available, invitations to special events like the inauguration, and the tradition of being rendered a salute by all military members, up to and including the commander in chief. As for me, an airman, fixing B1s and 15s way, way back in the day, I didn't give the Medal of Honor much thought at all, beyond thinking it would be pretty cool to have the officers salute me for a change. Even before I joined the Legion, I didn't give the meaning of the medal much thought. Then I met another member, Les Steffner, and followed him on Facebook. There, he posts biographies of Medal of Honor recipients and other notable veterans and service members. Reading these posts filled and filled me with a sense of awe. Also, I have noticed that we citizens as individuals, no offense, don't have the voice to advocate for change that I had expected when I was a kid. However, the benefits afforded Medal of Honor recipients, access, mobility, remuneration, and recognition seem designed to afford them an increased opportunity to be advocates. So we come back to what is the meaning of the Medal of Honor. We looked at the statute, the lives lived by the recipients, the benefits afforded them, and the reflections of one lowly veteran. What did we find? The Medal of Honor is the way our military services recognize truly exceptional human beings, and begins to pave the way for these heroes to affect change and help people in unique and powerful ways. Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to invite Allen Lynch and his wife to come forward. Suzy, would you like to come up? Yes. And yeah, if you would just face outward. And for starters, I'll introduce House Representative Joyce Mason, who has a resolution, I believe, from the State House of Representatives.
Just to say a couple of words. Thank you so much. Sergeant Lynch probably doesn't remember this, but when the new Army recruiting office opened in Gurnee, I had the honor of meeting you, and I was a bit like a fangirl coming up. I think I was a bit silly because I just couldn't believe that I was, I was getting to meet you, and it's such an honor to be able to present this with you. I have an autographed copy of your book at home, although you didn't autograph it for me, but I highly recommend it to anybody who is looking for really some true inspiration. I have here a resolution from the State of Illinois House of Representatives from the 104th General Assembly, and much of it you've heard already. But whereas the members of the Illinois House of Representatives wish to commend Sergeant Allen James Lynch on his military service and on his dedication to serving the veterans of the State of Illinois, whereas Allen James Lynch was born in Chicago on October 28th, 1967. of the State of Illinois, whereas Alan James Lynch was born in Chicago on October 28th, 1945, and grew up in Indiana, he enlisted in the United States Army in 1964 and served until 1969 during the Vietnam War as a Specialist Four with Company D, 1st Battalion, 12th Cavalry Regiment, 1st Cavalry Division, Air Mobile. And whereas Alan James Lynch, while serving with his unit on December 15th, 1967, was near Mai An in the Bin Din Province of Vietnam, when he bravely rescued three wounded soldiers at great risk to his own life and stayed behind with them when everyone else withdrew, he protected the men and single-handedly defended them against enemy attack for hours before being able to bring them to safety. And whereas Alan James Lynch, as a result of his heroism above and beyond the call of duty during the fight, was promoted to Sergeant and awarded the Medal of Honor by President Richard Nixon in 1970. And whereas Alan James Lynch, following the war, settled in Gurnee and worked for the Department of Veteran Affairs, where he advocated for increased benefits for disabled veterans and served as Chief of the Veterans Rights Bureau for the Illinois Attorney General's Office until his retirement in 2005. And whereas Alan James Lynch has spent time volunteering for the Vietnam Veterans of America and serves as the liaison for the Congressional Medal of Honor Society, providing outreach and speaking at military-related events. And whereas Alan James Lynch is a published author and wrote about his experience in a memoir entitled Zero to Hero, which was published in 2019. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the 104th General Assembly of the State of Illinois that we commend Sergeant Alan James Lynch on his military service and express our deepest gratitude on his dedication to serving our nation and the veterans of the State of Illinois, and be it further resolved that you receive this lovely copy. So as the daughter of a veteran and as a mom of two kids who enjoy the freedom that we have right now, it is my greatest honor to give this to you.
With the State Representative. There we go. Want to hold up the resolution? There we go. One, two, three, four. Beautiful. Okay. So we've also, just there, oh, sure. Had a class made in your honor, and it is going to be at the Veterans Memorial Park, which is at the police station at Washington and the Plain Road, and, you guys ready? All right, one, two, three. Holy. All right. So it's, as I said, it lays out, I think, a lot of the biography, and again, for me, it's the life you've led since this point and what you've done with the honor, and I just so appreciate that, and we just, of the Village of Gurnee and the residents of the Village of Gurnee want to honor you for the choices you've made, and as well as you, Suzy, for part of the family. We hold that post, dear? Sure.
I mean, she's got to do a lot. One, two, three. One of those is very good. So would you like to say it?
Sure. Wow. Wow. Speechless, mostly. 55-plus years together. I would not be here today if it wasn't for my Lord and my wife. Both have stuck with me through everything, and I owe everything to this lady right here. She's extremely special to me. And to see my friends from the Legion and Lake County Veterans Assistance Commission, I am so pleased that you gave them that building certificate, it's something they have been working on since 2012. You guys have done a tremendous job. If you need, if you're a veteran and you need help, that's where you go, right there, those guys, and those people at the Veterans Assistance Commission. I'm blown away. I'm just blown away. I want to thank everybody for coming out, and, you know, it's Veterans Day next week, and this is the lead-up to it. What I love so much, when I drive down the street out here and I see the banners listing all of the men and women that have served in the Armed Forces from our city, right in front of the high school, so the high school kids can see every day what it costs for them to be free. That is probably one of the best things I think we could ever put in front of a high school. That is just amazing. So we have a phenomenal town, we have a great mayor, we have a great city council. I can't thank Gurnee enough for, geez, we've been here since, I think we moved into Grandwood Park in 1973, and now we're across the road over here in 41, and it's just, it's a great city. My kids have grown up here, they all went to Warren, it's a great high school. We are so blessed to live in a country and to live in a city like Gurnee. It's just great. So thank you very much, I really appreciate you coming out, and I look forward to meeting you in the back in a bit. Thank you very much, really appreciate it.[1691.11][1691.11][applause]
You just want to stay right here. So I just would end this and say that the highest and greatest blessing that I think I can give to you is one from Jesus, and that I would just say that, just I pray that Jesus would fill you both, that every purpose in your life that God has set out, that they would come to pass, that He would protect you, and that I'm just thankful that you are Jesus followers, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to have refreshments afterwards, so please feel free to stay afterwards and meet Alan and Suzy, and thank you for coming out.[1748.02][1748.02][applause]